This final debate for today is for the City of Bellingham, City Council at Large position. And there are two candidates on the ballot for this race. And so I would like to introduce Dana Briggs and Holly Huthman. Welcome. And here's the description. The City of Bellingham Council is a legislative body for the city, responsible for setting public policies, adopting long-range plans, approving the budget and taxes, and passing laws. Council members are engaged in the community and responsive to constituent concerns. The council at-large term of office is two years, with an annual salary of $27,132. Everybody ready? Okay.
All right. Thanks to everybody who's been here since nine o'clock. I see some of you. This is a long meeting to sit in those chairs. Luckily, they're more comfortable than the city council chairs. So my name's Holly Huthman. I'm running for City of Bellingham City Council at Large. And I'm newer to the political scene, but I'm not new to the community. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a graduate from Western. I've lived in Bellingham for 20 years in eight different neighborhoods, seven of those as a renter. I have worked at a local credit union in my time here. Worked there for over a decade. Really seeing the financial situation of people in our community is really interesting and eye-opening, actually. I have also owned a live music venue for almost a decade now and employ 20 people. And I've been very active in the arts and music community, namely as the board chair of makeshift and as a musician and many other avenues. So I believe problems are best solved collaboratively. I really think it's important to hear the perspectives of impacted people when we're talking about decisions, not just hear their perspective, but also hear their ideas. Because I think that there are just an enormous amount of good ideas in this community. People just need somebody to ask them what they would do to solve a problem or move us forward. I'm a listening leader. I believe that the public policy needs really to be guided by evidence, data, research, and again, also the perspective of the people that are being impacted. I'm endorsed by the Watcom Democrats, the Washington Conservation Voters, Sierra Club, the Local Firefighters Union, the Teamsters, NARAL, and three wonderful women who've had this seat before me, Roxanne Murphy.
And two others.
And two others. Thank you.
Candidate Briggs.
Hello. Thanks for hanging in there all this time. And for those of you that are either watching this livestream or will watch it on the recorded version on YouTube or elsewhere. My name is Dana Briggs, and I'm running for the City Council at Large position, which is probably very appropriate because to the best of my knowledge, I am the only candidate for any elected office in the entire county who's actually homeless. And I've been homeless for almost two years. I live in a motel. I work full-time. And yet I cannot afford the move-in cost to get into a place here, let alone to compete with the rents. People that I work with at my place of employment, many of them live as far away as Anacortes and Sumas. And yet they travel every day just to get here to work. We have some fundamental, serious challenges in this city, just like we do across the country. And for all of us, depending upon your age, your great-grandparents, your grandparents, or your parents, sometime in the 1930s and '40s, had two serious challenges: the Great Depression and World War II. And those two great challenges threatened their way of life. They rose to the occasion. They sacrificed. They did what was necessary to create a better world for everyone. And yet now, here we are, 70-plus years later, and our actual way of life is destroying us because of the use of fossil fuels, because of the housing crisis, which has been going on way too long with way too much talk and not enough action, because of the way that our federal government treats human beings that are fleeing the climate problems across the borders. So I'm going to hopefully get on the council to do whatever we can do locally to help solve or mitigate many of those problems.
Thank you. Okay, I have some general questions for you. We'll start with candidate Briggs. What are you most excited about working on if you are elected to this position?
The overarching issue for everybody, not only in the City of Bellingham, but across the planet, actually, is the climate emergency. I don't use the term crisis anymore because it's no longer a crisis. It's an actual emergency. We need to be able to do whatever we can locally and not wait for others to sit down and do it for us. And the Climate Action Plan and the task force and their recommendations that are coming up on November the 18th are going to be a good starting point. But then we need to think outside of the box, and any solution at all, regardless of whether we think it's feasible or not, needs to be placed on the table and evaluated, and then we can determine what to do past that. If we mess up the environment, nothing else will matter. Housing won't matter. Good-wage jobs won't matter because we're going to have problems surviving.
Candidate Huthman.
So I think the thing that I'm most excited about is what I studied in school. I studied criminology and incarceration reduction. We have so much room for improvement, and we know how to get there. And I think we can get there really quickly. And so I'm really excited because I think it's we'll see the benefits of the work that we do really quickly. We can, you know, increase diversion alternatives, increase our mental health and addiction service funding and access, and really reduce the need for jail to next to nothing because crime is declining, and it's going to continue to decline. And we're just going to get better and better at making sure that people don't end up incarcerated in the first place.
Thank you. Candidate Huthman, what city in America do you look to as a model of how to accomplish something that you would like to see happen here in Bellingham?
You know what? Getting to know a lot of the programs that we in Bellingham have piloted, it's we're a model city. And I don't think a lot of people realize that. Some of the programs, like the Community Paramedic Program. We have one community paramedic. We're going to add another. This is a program where we target, we identify, and we target the people that use first responder resources the most. And there's somebody dedicated to actually take a look and say, "What is the source of this person's problems, really?" And it's been incredibly successful. It's paid for itself and then some. So it's a program that we are the first really kind of to do in our area. And other communities are now starting to look to us to figure out how they can implement it in their own communities.
Thank you. Candidate Briggs.
So my response to that would be, Bellingham, yes, in fact, has done a lot of good things when it comes to climate and other issues. If there was one city that comes to the top of my mind, which I think we can model some of what they do, it's Boulder, Colorado. Boulder, Colorado is actually a university town with the University of Colorado itself. It's roughly the same size and population as Bellingham, with a much larger university system than we have. But they became very proactive back in the 1970s with doing everything from transportation reform to shutting down certain streets in the urban core to make them totally walkable. In other words, plaza-type environments. Worked very heavily on energy issues. And so we don't need to duplicate that, but we can look at them as a possibility, and they might look at us as a possibility.
Thank you. Candidate Briggs, what are two actions you are willing to take in the next six months to reduce your personal contribution to carbon emissions?
Two actions? Well, realistically, I don't have to do a whole lot because as a working-class, poor, homeless individual, my carbon footprint is already pretty small as it is. I don't own a vehicle. I ride public transportation everywhere or walk. I, in the living situation that I'm in, I have no kitchen. Therefore, the only thing that I can cook for myself is done by electricity in a microwave. I don't generate a whole lot of refuse of any kind. And I've actually encouraged the landowner from where I live to do more recycling. So this is something that a lot of people need to understand. The homeless, in many respects, have the lowest carbon footprint of anybody in the community, and I'm one of them.
Thank you. Candidate Huthman.
So I am one of those people that got on the e-bike bandwagon in order to reduce my carbon footprint personally. And it's been life-changing, and it's made it incredibly easy to commute to work from my home and other places. So committing to doing that even in the rain, I think, is a big leap for me already. But one other thing that I want to do with my own personal business is a waste reduction audit and figuring out how we can reduce our food waste in particular. Food waste is one of the biggest sources of landfill waste that we have in this country, which is a shame. Because, you know, for one thing, people are food insecure and going hungry, and we're throwing a lot of food away. So figuring out ways to reduce both the purchasing and the waste that's going into the landfill in my own business is something that I'm going to do over the next couple of months.
Thank you. Candidate Huthman, are you aware of any IT solutions that could increase city worker productivity?
That's a really interesting question. I'm not, because I'm not familiar with what's already in existence. So no, I don't think I can answer that question.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Briggs.
I would have to echo Holly in that respect because we are not privy to what IT solutions the city administration is already using. So until we find out what it is that they're doing or what they are considering, there's no way to give a coherent, concrete answer to that.
Okay. So we're going to try a different question that I bet you can have an opinion or do have an opinion about. And we'll start with candidate Briggs. Does the city have a role in ensuring residents have access to state-of-the-art internet? And what can you do to increase computer literacy in an online world?
I actually started on the internet long before any of you even knew that it existed when I was in the military back in the 1970s. And I've seen it grow into what it is today. Yes, the public has a responsibility, and the government has a responsibility, to provide public access to the internet. It started out as a government-funded program. It should continue to be a government-funded program. And in my mind, never should have been privatized at all. So we do it through the library systems. We could potentially set up neighborhood nodes for people, teach classes to individuals and basic computer skills, and allow them to ask the questions that they need to do and publicly own fiber. So that's where we need to drive. If we truly want to give everybody a level playing field, then that's one of the things that we need to do.
Candidate Huthman.
I think libraries are incredibly important. Libraries are incredibly important on so many different levels. It gives children a place to go. It gives people who are maybe currently unsheltered a place to go. It's and it gives us access to technologies that we might not have access to. And so keeping our libraries well-funded all throughout our community is really, really important. And I think that we need to continue the discussion about broadband and providing broadband all throughout our city. And again, removing the barriers to that technology because that is a huge roadblock for folks and really, really important for our health and learning. So.
Thank you. Candidate Huthman, what role does the city council have in creating good working relationships with the tribes and other municipalities located in our area?
Well, the City of Bellingham isn't an island. And so just like it's really important to work collaboratively amongst the people in our city, it's important to work with people outside of our city. And in particular, the tribes are a huge ally for progressing a lot of the priorities on our table, especially with the environment.
Candidate Briggs.
The tribes are sovereign nations. According to the Constitution of the United States, we only sign treaties with other sovereign nations. So the tribes are not on an equal level with the city or the county or the state. They're on an equal level with the federal government of the United States. Anything that they require from us, after discussion, overrides our responsibilities here because we are sitting on stolen land. We didn't personally do it, but some of our ancestors may have done so. And as far as I'm concerned, I think that the relationships are improving, and they're realizing that there's any number of us that are their allies. But if I had to make a choice between a tribal right and a local right, the tribal right would trump the situation.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Briggs, we're going to start with you. Please explain why you do or don't believe the process for developing the waterfront is on the right track? And what contributions do you want to make as the plans move forward?
I would like us to revisit the entire waterfront development for any number of reasons. Number one, it's sitting on a toxic site. And no matter the cleanup, especially if we're planning on building residential facilities on that site, we need to take a good, hard look at the environmental impacts. I don't think that there's been enough done, if anything, to even accommodate for the fact that we're going to have sea level rise in the next 50 to 100 years. And yet, that area is very close since it's right next to the bay, could very well be partially or totally flooded out. I think that even if we mitigate all of that, there is no plans at this point for affordable housing in that area. It's all market rate, and I'm totally against that. That would be a prime opportunity to put affordable-rate housing down on the waterfront and let them have the view for once.
Thank you. Candidate Huthman.
Yeah, it's a complicated issue. And I have only realized it's more complicated the more I learn about it. I think it is a concern that we're building on a landfill, essentially. And I worry about our long-term plans on that piece of property. But with what we have right now, hardcore is moving at a snail's pace to get anything done down there. And I think that, you know, it's not the city's responsibility, but it's the poor's responsibility to hold their feet to the fire and get that done or move on to an alternative. I think there actually are some plans for some affordable housing that I believe the Opportunity Council is working on. It's affordable housing plus a community kitchen, I think, which will be really amazing. So supporting that effort on the city's part, I think, will be huge.
Thank you. Candidate Huthman, what impacts do you believe homelessness has had on downtown business owners?
That's tough because people experiencing homelessness come from a variety of backgrounds and are experiencing a variety of situations. But I do understand the questions may be talking about the visible homelessness that we're seeing downtown, which I have experienced, seeing that uptick in people sleeping on sidewalks and in the streets. Not in the streets, on the sidewalks and in doorways. And I think it has impacted business owners who not only are sometimes inconvenienced, yes, but also are compassionate people who want to see those folks housed as well. I think there's a perception from folks, particularly outside of our city, that, you know, maybe they don't want to come downtown because there is a visible homeless problem, which is also...
Thank you. Candidate Briggs.
So that's actually a two-part answer to that. Number one, there's the visible homeless, which were only approximately one out of four homeless individuals in the county, according to the Opportunity Council and everybody else. And of course, that's what most people equate, the homeless being in totality, when it's not true. What we have to take into account is the three out of four individuals who are homeless in this county that are living in their cars or in motels like I am, or couch surfing, or living in tents, or living in shelters that don't have mental health problems or self-medication problems, that are basically not doing the downtown businesses any good because they have no disposable income to be able to spend anywhere. They're just trying to survive paycheck to paycheck or benefit check to benefit check. So I think the downtown businesses need to consider the fact that homelessness is affecting them both economically and from an appearance standpoint.
Thank you. Candidate Briggs, it is well-recognized that behavioral health issues have increased while services have decreased. How do you propose to increase the availability of these services to those incarcerated for misdemeanor crimes in the city?
I'm not sure that there's actually a connection between behavioral health incidents and misdemeanors. There might be, based on an individual basis. However, the state-level initiatives that have increased the amount of money that's going towards behavioral health is a good start. We need to make sure that we're getting the appropriate amount or our fair share of whatever that is, both in the city and the county, to be able to accommodate individuals. And if nothing else, at least set up a screening system to determine whether why a misdemeanor was created to begin with had anything to do with behavioral health issues and not just assume that they're all caused by that.
Thank you. Candidate Huthman.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. It's well-recognized that behavioral health issues have increased while services have decreased. How do you propose to increase the availability of these services to those incarcerated for misdemeanor crimes in our city?
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, overall, we have a problem with actually addressing the root of the problem. The reason why somebody is incarcerated in the first place, and especially for those low-level crimes, it's often something, some issue that we're not treating to begin with, something that we could have prevented. And so I think having, you know, there's a nice first step where we have a police officer that's dedicated to addressing the mental health needs of folks because our mental health calls have increased by something like 3,000%, while just about every other kind of call has either stayed steady or reduced. And so somebody who can, at least, you know, at that level, address the core issues as to why somebody's behaving the way that they are. But that's just a Band-Aid to actually getting at the real root of the problems. And we need to continue to increase our services to address that.
Thank you. Candidate Huthman, what steps can the city take to create or encourage affordable housing, including for the middle class, in the city limits?
Well, I think, you know, I'm seeing amongst the people that I know that it's really difficult for folks who are making, who are working full-time, make a good wage, even for those folks to find available and affordable housing. And they're starting to want to move to different communities because of that. And it's unfortunate because these are people that we really want to keep here. And so I think organizations like Colson Land Trust, where we're locking in permanently affordable housing solutions is an amazing step. I can think of a lot of folks who, in our community, who could utilize that sort of a program. I think that continuing to densify our urban villages, continuing to make room, and incentivize all kinds of affordable options in our community is critical.
Thank you. Candidate Briggs.
So there, as been mentioned in a previous debate, there are short- and long-term solutions. It takes two years or more to develop a multifamily unit or a duplex or a single-family home. And in the meantime, we've got people that have been waiting for years just to find someplace to live. We need, since we now have the ordinances that have been passed by the city for tent encampments and safe parking places and tiny home villages, the city needs to be more proactive on getting organizations, whether they're public, private, nonprofit, whatever they are, to be able to start managing those things because we've said that this is something we want to do, but we're not moving fast enough. The other part of it is, is that, in my opinion, market-rate housing has been part of the problem. And I'm not in favor of incentivizing market-rate housing any longer. If they want to build affordable, permanent, publicly-owned housing, we can incentivize that.
Thank you. Candidate Briggs, the city recently allowed a homeless tent encampment on city property. What are your thoughts of the possibility of continuing to offer tent encampments for homeless members of our community?
As I mentioned before, we have the short-term problem from immediate need up to the two-year point. So yes, in fact, we do need more opportunity for managed tent encampments to occur, either on city-owned property or the city working in conjunction with private or nonprofit landowners to be able to establish those tent encampments. The unfortunate thing is, is that tent encampments are not a good idea in the wintertime. They're very hard to maintain, and it puts the residents in a life-threatening situation. And I know that for a fact because I was pulling people off the streets for two and a half weeks during the freeze in February and early March and trying to get them into more permanent shelters during that timeframe.
Thank you. Candidate Huthman.
I think increasing the available options for all kinds of short-term solutions is a great idea. I think that there are a lot of people out in our community that have a lot of passion to care for people, and they have great ideas. And so supporting those folks to come up with solutions and/or getting out of their way in order to do that, I think, is a good idea. But I also want to focus on not needing to have those short-term temporary encampments. Getting, you know, going to the source of the problem and really focusing on making sure that we have lots of available and affordable housing and moving towards a society where housing is a right and that everybody is entitled to a roof over their head.
Thank you. We're going to start with candidate Huthman. What criminal justice reforms would you recommend the city undertake to improve our criminal justice system?
We're moving in a really great direction on that. I'm so happy to see that because it's so different than it was 20 years ago when I was studying this. But I think that, you know, like I mentioned, we've just got a police officer that is focused on mental health needs. I think we need more of those police officers who are working in conjunction with caseworkers. We need more caseworkers. We need caseworkers that are earning more money than they do because it's a really tough and high-stress job. And we want to keep those good folks in those jobs and wanting to do that job. So that's one big part of the problem that we can start implementing now. I think that long-term, we've got a crisis stabilization center that is going to be helping people in the short term when they are in crisis. But we need something for when those folks move out of that center and need more long-term care. People need care every step of the way and make sure that they're not falling through the cracks.
Thank you. Candidate Briggs.
I'm totally in favor of restorative justice as opposed to punitive justice. I think we've created a massive subculture in this country of a lot of people who, if they weren't violent before they went into the incarceration system, they're certainly violent now. And they've just become violent because they had to do it to survive. So if I had my way and I were king for a day, I would turn around and not incarcerate anybody that's committed a nonviolent offense. We can put them on monitoring systems. We can figure out other ways of making sure that they meet their court dates. But anybody that's in a nonviolent situation should not be in jail, as far as I'm concerned. Fines are appropriate. The violent offenders, yes, they do need to be in there because they're a danger to themselves, let alone anybody else.
Thank you. Okay, this is our last question. And we're going to start with candidate Briggs. Bellingham is becoming more diverse in terms of race and sexual identity. What can the city do to ensure that all voices are heard?
We've heard a lot about being proactive. The universe that I live in on a day-to-day basis deals with people of color, different sexual identities, different views on all kinds of things. sexual identities, different views on all kinds of things. And the big thing is, is that we need to quit being afraid of each other. We need to sit down and actually start talking to one another, even if we are in the proverbial agree to disagree. Because part of being a community is actually paying attention to one another and allowing everybody the opportunity to be able to say whatever they need to say without retribution. Communication, above all, has gone by the wayside. And so, I, as an example, would go out to all the neighborhoods at least every six months, and attempt to hold town halls on specific issues at least once a year. And let's get people engaged in being what's going on.
Thank you. Candidate Hethman?
I think that people see elected officials as somebody that they need to reach out to in order to be heard. And I think that elected officials should really change that, and be going out to folks to ask them their opinions, going to people where they are at the times that they can be accessed as well. And so, you know, I think it's really important to me that I'm reaching out to the people who are impacted by the decisions that we're making.
Thank you. So, we're going to move into our closing statements, and candidate Hethman, you're going first.
Okay. So, I take very seriously the responsibility that, as a city councilperson, I am representing all of the residents of our city, from our elders to our newborns, from homeowners to renters, to the currently unsheltered, from people who have families that have been here for generations, then even longer, to the people who just moved here from another country, from those people who are brave enough to get up and talk at a city council meeting, this guy, to folks who would never set foot in city hall. I think I want to be a city councilperson who's really accessible, who listens, who reaches out. And like I said, because we have so many ideas and so many wonderful perspectives, and the best way to move forward is together. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Briggs?
Thanks for the opportunity to present myself. This is one of the few times that I've actually been able to do this. Because of the nature of the work that I do, I rarely, if ever, am allowed time off to go anywhere to speak in front of anybody. I have not banged on doors. Everything that I've done in the campaign has been by word of mouth. Other than the filing fee for the candidacy itself, I haven't spent a penny. I also have turned around and have received absolutely no endorsements from anyone, or from current or former elected officials. And yet, there were still 4,392 people who voted for me in the primary. That kind of tells you that there's a whole lot of folks that aren't satisfied with business as usual. I'm not as satisfied with business as usual, and I want everybody to get off their rear ends, register to vote, encourage people to vote, go vote, this is not a spectator sport.
Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause for joining us.